Next item is discussion on CRA for the statute, CRA city interlocal, city RMA contract. Commissioner Ross, you asked us to be on, do you want, I won't say tee it up. Would you care to introduce this item?
Certainly. Mayor, thank you so much. Because the vast majority of the CRA district is in District Three, I felt it incumbent upon me to try and educate myself on how the CRA should be operating and then juxtapose or compare it to how we're operating now. And so I just had some questions. I realize that we have an independent contractor that is performing with the city in that role. We had Mr. Ward serving as executive director. Now he's gone and I, you know, I received a phone call from another person that would like the position, but I, in reading the bylaws, I think we have not been operating in accordance therewith. And so I kind of wanted to know, you know, has there been some change or, you know, why have we deviated from the way the bylaws read?
All right. Why don't we have a little bit, we'll have a presentation from the city attorney on how we got to where we are now and then I'll insert some commentary as to what happened with Mr. Ward.
Okay. Before I begin, Kimberly Rothenberg, city attorney. And I have actually prepared a little bit broader presentation that includes what is required to create a CRA, the powers and authority of the CRA under the statute, the creation of the West Palm Beach CRA, staffing of the CRA, the city's contract regarding the appointment of the executive director and the future processes for appointment of executive director. If you all don't need the background history, let me know, but if you'd like me to continue with that, I'm happy to do so. So in essence, the creation of a CRA starts by making a determination of slum and blight, making the appropriate findings of necessity and defining the area that the CRA should operate under. The city, in that regard, has followed all of the necessary processes for the creation of both the city center CRA and then subsequently the Pleasant City and Northwood CRA. In addition, the, once the areas are defined, the governing body either appoints a board or appoints itself as a board. And in this instance, the city at the time appointed the members of its governing body as the members of the CRA agency. Following that, the city also followed the statutory requirements of adopting a redevelopment plan for each of the identified areas and established trust funds. This slide simply goes through a history of some of those ordinances and resolutions that were adopted over time to create the city's CRA and the areas of redevelopment.
And you will make this power point available to the commissioners?
I absolutely will.
Okay.
So statutory authorities that are granted to CRA in a broad context, they are aimed toward encouraging private development, creating workable programs to eliminate the spread of slum and blight, to encourage redevelopment within the CRA areas, to redevelopment, to redevelop slum and blighted areas, to provide affordable housing in those areas, and to incentivize redevelopment by private entities. Another broad area is that the CRA is required to appropriate funds to preserve and enhance the tax base within their taxing, within their taxing authority areas. Some additional enumerated powers, with the overall power being that the CRA has the all powers that are necessary and convenient to carry out and effectuate the purposes of the Community Redevelopment Act, and it has a list of things that include, in summary, executing contracts, disseminating information about redevelopment information, additionally, acquisition of property, both purchase and sale within the areas, demolition and removal of buildings, those type of things. So how do we exercise the powers within the CRA? The CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, is a separate legal entity that's separate and apart from the city, separate and apart from your duties as commissioners. The powers of CRA is executed by the board. The board acts by majority of the members present to vote on items before them. As it relates to the executive director, there's a provision in the code, in the statute that specifically says, "An agency may employ an executive director, technical experts, and such other agents and employees, permanent and temporary, as it requires, and determine their qualifications, duties, and compensation. For such legal services as it requires, an agency may employ or retain its own legal So prior to 2013, the CRA was staffed by city employees from the eighties up until 2013. That staffing was funded through an interlocal agreement between the city and the CRA. In December of 2013, the city and the CRA agreed to outsource those staffing needs and the management of the CRA. They did that by the city executing a staffing agreement with the CRA and then the CRA funding that staffing agreement. In January of 2019, the board, the city again adopted the second staffing and management agreement. It's for a term of, expires on December of 2022. I believe there's a two-year extension renewal ability within the contract. Under the contract...
Yes, clarification?
Yes, madam.
So Ms. Rothenberg, can you explain why does the city hold that contract and the CRA just fund it?
Because the, at the time that it was done, because the staffing is done through the executive office of the city, those employees are managed through the executive division of the city under the mayor's authority. So the staffing was done as a city contract with the city as opposed to the CRA. The CRA funds the staffing contract.
So in other words, even prior to RMA coming in, the CRA was staffed with employees of the city?
Correct.
Correct? And those employees were city employees and came under the rubric and the organization of the city?
Yes, they did.
Correct? So when we moved to outsource it, the staffing was moved from the city to RMA?
Correct.
So it made sense for the city to be the party to the contract with RMA as opposed to the CRA, because that's where the staffing had originally been done?
Exactly. Because you need the city to be able to monitor and implement the contract. So that, that's, you know, the day-to-day operation of the contract is administered through the executive office of the city.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a further point of clarification. So prior to 2013, when the CRA was part of city staff, that would have meant the city, in essence, billed back, and I'm using loose terms, to our, to the CRA, all of that administration, because the city would have been implementing HR plans, insurance, et cetera, anything that was required of CRA board.
Right.
So, and then the, the reverse is correct now, where now that the CRA is an outsourced entity, the CRA is billing back to the city for city services used by the CRA.
In essence, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
The city and the CRA enter into an interlocal agreement that the, all the funding requirements of the operation of the CRA are paid for by the CRA as a reimbursement to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Or funded and then paid by the city. So the contract itself, though, has a provision that says that the executive director is appointed by RMA, that the city, if they're unhappy with the appointment of the executive director, can tell RMA that and that RMA will choose another executive director that would, will serve in that capacity. So that's your current framework of how it works under the contract.
And it's the city that makes that notice to the CRA, to RMA, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Ross.
Can you point to what document, what provision under, that has been executed that took away the power of the CRA to hire its own executive director and to control its employees?
I can simply tell you that the city entered into the staffing and management contract with RMA that defines the obligations of each party. At the time that the city and the CRA both were considering those documents, this is the framework that was established. It's cer, it's currently a contractual obligation and duty, but looking forward, how you want that to happen, I can go through here are some of the services of the contract, but going forward, your selection process, if you wanted to change what's currently in place, you can amend your contract. Take out, if in fact you're worried about that executive director position and having it provided for under a different process, you would then come up with, what is your process? And what qualifications are you looking for? And how do we select the executive director? And it can be selected through the CRA board.
Well, let's go backwards. Let's go backwards. In December, in 2013, presumably there were resolutions passed by the city and by the CRA?
There were.
Authorizing this outsourcing, correct?
Yes, that's the only way we can operate.
Both bodies passed resolutions authorizing the current structures. Does that answer your question, Commissioner, or you have further?
I, I don't know if it does, because without seeing the document, I don't know what powers the board, let me put it this way. The CRA has bylaws, correct?
It does.
And those bylaws provide that the CRA board, that would be all of the commissioners, including the mayor, hire and fire an executive director.
I'm not sure that those are the exact terms, but I think that that is the intent.
Okay. Is there a resolution or is there a document that takes that authority away from the CRA pursuant to the bylaws?
Your, your actions through the adoption of subsequent resolutions said that you would follow a different process.
That's what I'm asking you, is, is there a resolution that allows for us to, because in the, in, isn't there a statutory requirement on how CRA operates? 168?
There is a whole statute that talks about the CRA.
Right, right.
The one section that we went over said that the CRA may hire such employees as it seems, deems necessary. It included your executive director and some other enumerated employees.
Right.
How you do that is, is a function of what you do as a body.
So if you would then, so that I'm clear, I would just ask you to get me a copy of the resolution that abdicated the power of the CRA to the city in terms of hiring and firing the employees that work for the CRA?
I'll get you all of the documents that surrounded that transaction.
Thank you.
So I think a question is, and you may even need to go further back, because as I understood it based upon your presentation, even prior to the outsourcing in 2013, the staffing was done through the city?
It was.
Okay. So I don't know if that, that was pursuant to a resolution back in the eighties or whatever.
I'll, I'll follow all the way back through and see if there are some resolutions or votes of the board along the way to hire employees.
Yeah.
I don't recall during my tenure here having the board have those discussions. And I've been here about 15 years.
All right. Okay. Commissioner Shaw, and we'll get back to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the, the problem that I'm having in this conversation is we're abdicating, because according to what I can see from what you've presented here today, the CRA board has not abdicated any of that power, if I'm correct. There's, the CRA is still fully in control of who can be hired and fired. It is done through the outsourced arms. So in essence, RMA can bring an executive director and this body sitting as the CRA board can say, no, we don't want that, that CRA director. And just the same as I sit and have, I can have meetings and conversations with RMA individually as any commissioner here on the day as can, or sitting as the CRA director board. So there's, we, we still have the ability of sitting here as this board to be in control of the staffing as far as executive directing, in that we get the say of yes or no. They can, they can bring forward a candidate and we can say no to that candidate, according to what you wrote, wrote up there, that's what that says.
It, it says that, you know, they, they select the employees who will serve in the various role, roles. The city has to be satisfied with the work that those employees do, and if they're unsatisfied, they can ask for another under the contract.
Correct.
A different employee in, in any given position, there's many of them.
And so in essence, we would control the employees performing within those roles?
Provided that they're, yes, that, that RMA has employees to substitute them with. You've, you've outsourced your, you're allowing RMA to select because they're an outsourced company, so they're their employees and they work under the contract for the city. Unlike if they were city employees, they would, we would have more control over who's applying, who's, who you select or choose, but if you've outsourced the management and the staffing to RMA, they're RMA employees and they would have to bring them to you work, and if you're unsatisfied under the contract, you as a board, or in this instance, I believe the mayor as well, because it's a city contract, can say, we're unhappy with this particular employee.
Correct. But I guess my point that I'm making here is, it's not as if by hiring RMA as a contractor, we are required to keep the staff that RMA has put in place if we are unsatisfied with the work that they're doing, understanding it's not that we're saying, hey, we have candidate X, we would like to see them in that role as the CRA board. It is still RMA coming to us with their employees that they have hired and that is what, that is who fills those positions.
They do currently. And, and in order to change that, you would have to change the contract, otherwise you would be paying for folks that you're not getting a service from.
Understood.
And I think a, a tweak is that, as I, as I understand, the contract with respected executive director, the, the removal of the executive director can be requested by the city?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So it's not, not the CRA board technically, because the contract is with the city?
It's with the city.
Which is how we ended up with the decision on Mr. Ward. And then under the current contract, if we, if we stayed there, then RMA would come up with an alternative for the executive director that they would choose, and then that person would act in that capacity. And if there was dissatisfaction, you would rinse and repeat, you'd repeat the same process. But they, RMA does not necessarily, they're not required to seek prior approval of the replacement executive director from either the city or the CRA.
Not under the existing contract.
Not under the existing contract. Okay. All right. I think Commissioner Neering.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So under the existing contract, the analogy I'll use is the horse has left the barn, because we are being, at that point, as a CRA board, we're being reactive to judgment on a scope of work as opposed to, as an elected body coming in and making that decision on the front end. Because that's really where I was going. This background is very helpful. Thank you so much for it, appreciate it. But to me, the germane points are what's before us, and that's really what I'm hoping today I can leave here with clarification around my role as to, we have an interim CRA director. Sounds like we are, we is relative now, so I'm being very broad with that. Sounds like there is an action to fill that position. The question I have, and I thought I've heard it, but I'd like to hear it more deliberately, is what is the process that this current CRA board plays in the selection of the next CRA director in real time?
In real time, with your existing contract, RMA would bring forward another executive director, unless it's revised.
Under the existing contract?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Ross.
Nope, Beduzzi, I think it was before.
Okay. Commissioner Beduzzi.
So it would have to be still ratified, though, by this board, though? No?
No. Under the existing contract. Now, let, let me insert, since we're on this topic, and we'll speak to the process. It has always been my hope and desire, I campaigned on this, it was something that was brought to me also by my transition team, to amend the RMA contract such that the executive director of the CRA would now be a city employee. So we would remove the executive director from the RMA tent, if you will, and place him and her, him or her, under the city tent. I, I did that because I wanted to make sure, in my view, it was important to have the face of the CRA be a city employee so that they can also interface and oversee the RMA contract on behalf of the city. Now, to do that, we would have to amend the RMA contract. And I've had conversations with the owners of RMA and they are amenable to doing that. Now, how do we come to, and this is addressing Commissioner Neering's point, how do we come to, if that is the case, if we do amend the contract, then what role does a CRA board play in selecting the new executive director? And, and so I am proposing that we would do a search, go through a process of doing a search to find a new executive director, and then this board would weigh in on that. And so that would be the process going forward to identify the replacement executive director, assuming that there is a vote to a decision of this body, a mutual meeting of the minds between RMA and the city slash CRA to amend the RMA contract. Actually, it would just be the city, so you all sitting as the city commissioners, to amend the contract. So there will be a, 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 an understanding of a two-step process. One, to amend the contract, agree to move the executive director into the city's tent, and then to identify the process pursuant to which the executive director as a city employee would be hired to run the CRA. Commissioner Neering.
Thank you, Mayor. So the question I would have, if, if that were the case, is, does weigh-in mean ratify an applicant that is brought forth by administration, i.e. you, Mayor? Or does weigh-in mean something different as compared? And the only thing I will say, the asterisk there is that this is, in essence, a CRA position unlike other positions that require ratification, but, you know, obviously the onus is, is on you as mayor. This, to me, is different because it is a CRA position. So I don't want to take us there, because I know we haven't, I don't think we've talked about or made an agreement on amending the contract, but just because we've gone down that road, if that were to happen, the question, sorry, it's so long-winded, the question is, define weigh-in. What does weigh-in mean as you, as you've presented it?
As, as I thought I'd stated, there would be a process, a search, if you will. And, you know, there would, there would be a committee of this board that would interview applicants and, you know, make recommendations, and then the, the board as a selection committee would come up with the, the applicant they felt was most appropriate to guide and direct the CRA as a city employee. Did that answer your question?
That answers it a lot more than the first one, yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Ross.
And based on that rubric, would the city ultimately have the final say on if that applicant was hired?
No, it's a decision of the board, of the CRA.
Okay. Because, you know, the reason I say that we've abdicated our authority is because if an employee is a city employee versus being a CRA employee, the city then does have the legal right to fire any employee that it's, it's one of their employees, whereas if it's a CRA employee, the CRA board has the right to hire and fire that employee. Am I wrong in that, Ms. Rothenberg?
You're not wrong in that.
Okay. So then, at this point in time, because we've entered into this contract with RMA, the city has the right to hire and fire RMA, correct?
It's a city contract, yes.
Okay. So that's how I got to the point of abdicating our authority. The CRA no longer has the ability to hire and fire who's running our, our business. And so that's where, where we, where we, where there was a misunderstanding. And so, you know, it would be my preference that the CRA engage the next CRA director versus having that person be a city employee.
Well, so, so you mean the CRA then is going to come up with its own separate set of HR responsibilities, pension accounts, et cetera? One of the reasons, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it was deemed, even prior to RMA, that the employees of the CRA were city employees, is that we had that infrastructure in place already. So if you're talking about the CRA having its own separate human relations infrastructure, I'm not sure that's such a good idea for one employee.
No. What I'm saying is, is, is the way it's normally done is that there is an interlocal agreement that specifies that the employees will be city employees for purposes of those ministerial acts, but they would be under the direction and control of the CRA.
Well, I think that the, what we have in place, if we do amend the contract, would provide that the CRA, or a board have oversight responsibility for the CRA executive director. That's not, I'm not proposing that being changed, so if I use the term city employee, it, and maybe the interlocal would define that. It's not meant that the mayor would have the right to hire or fire that city employee. It's city employee to the extent that it comes under the HR infrastructure that's already in place at the city level. It is always contemplated, I've always contemplated, that the CRA board would hire or fire that individual, unlike what's happening now where RMA determines who they want to be the CRA executive director, and we simply sit back and either decide based upon the work performance, we do not like that individual, and then they'll come up with another name. Actually, what I'm proposing is that the CRA board would have a much more direct oversight of the new position. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think I, I hear between the, the system that we have now, where we have RMA that selects an executive director, that doesn't give the CRA, CRA board full control over who that person is, to Commissioner Neering's point, it makes us reactive. We do have control over it because we have the ability to say, the work being performed isn't up to the standard of what, what we'd like. However, that's after a period of time, of which we're not making traction on projects, of which we're not making progress. As opposed to the, the second scenario of, of which we're having a city employee, a CRA director as a full-time city employee, I think as a CRA board, the concern there would be that it would be out of the control of the, the CRA board itself. I understand, it doesn't sound like there is another path that is reasonable, given that the CRA board is not a full-time staff to the CRA, to create a, a separate CRA infrastructure. That's what that would require if we were employing our own CRA director. We would have a CRA, you know, HR department, a CRA administration, and that's why we have the interlocal agreement, so that the city already has that structure in place. It sounds like, and this is, this is something that, that I've always been in favor, you know, inner-city administrator, Johnson and I have had this conversation too about making sure that we get the best person, because I think that's what, what I'm hearing from this board, is that we want to make sure that there are choices, and I hear, Mayor, you saying that's what's in your, your purview as well, making sure we have the best choices, going out and having a search. And I think what it sounds like is, the, the wish of this board too, is to make sure that we keep that control as well, and it doesn't sound like anybody here is not amenable to that, either from administration's point of view or from CRA. So it sounds like we're kind of at a place where we have the best of all worlds, right? Where we're looking to have that full control and not be reactive, have an employee that... that, um, is more well within the control of the CRA and still have the ability on the hiring and firing side. And, and I think that, that to me is, is the one thing, um, to, to the point of having this be a CRA employee, um, just having gone through the experience under, um, our city charter of having s, a, a city employee, which the, the mayor has the ability to terminate and then this, the city commission ratifies. I think what I'm hearing, just for point of clarification, that under the proposed new role of having the CRA director as a city employee, that either as the city commission or the CRA board, we would have the ability to, um, approve both ways upon a termination or upon a new hiring. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and we're working out in the interlocal agreement between the CRA and the city. And, uh, I, I suppose before you, uh, were willing to move forward, you'd like to see a draft of that interlocal agreement to, to comfort yourself that you have the, uh, duties, rights and responsibilities that you're seeking. Uh, so I would propose that that would be the next step. We get a draft of a interlocal agreement between the CRA and the city. You all take a look at it, uh, make sure you're comfortable with it. Uh, and I think another, uh, discussion we should have, um, uh, or at least a draft of a document, which I was proposing to get you, would be a, an outline of the, uh, uh, job description, scope of services, however you want to describe it, that this, the executive director would have, so that you would have a sense, an input going into it as before we began the search, as what that position would entail. Um, so, uh, I'd like to see both of those documents get, uh, prepared and gotten in front of you and, and, and getting, uh, feedback from you. Commissioner Neering.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. In addition to that, could we also, um, if we are going that route, it sounds to me that a, a certain portion of dollars will be backed out of the existing contract. Um, I, I'd like to see if I could, just at that moment in time, what it is that the city is paying monthly and what are we receiving, um, for those, uh, for those dollars?
You mean under the contract as a whole or just for the executive director position?
Well, no, contract as a whole. So, understanding that we're obviously going to be backing out dollars that are associated with, uh, uh, an executive director, there may be more or less, I, I, I don't know, it sounds like that's where we're landing. But I'd like to see, okay, if it was, you know, a hundred dollars a month and now we're, we're at eighty dollars a month, uh, so the twenty is going towards the executive director in the city. I'd like to see again, just once again, a reset for me and, um, maybe the other commissioners as well, um, the eighty dollars a month. What are, what are we getting? What are we getting for that?
All right, if we can, uh, uh, Administrator Johnson, if you could prepare a summary of the con, with city attorney's help, a summary of the contract with the fiscal, uh, impact of the existing contract and, uh, get that to the commissioners so they could take a look at that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
And could we likewise get a copy of the contract?
Yes.
Absolutely. Yes. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I think a, along with that discussion, if, if we're going to be considering, um, ending that part of the contract with RMA, I think we need to have a discussion of the pros and cons or the, the reasons why we would be doing that, just so that we're all on the same page. I think we're all kind of saying we're moving in that direction, but I think, uh, uh, we need to have a, a discussion as the CRA board to do that. And I, Mayor, I do appreciate, um, I think what you were saying is that at the same time we're having the discussion about the interlocal agreement and about that contract, that we will not lose time or footing on the process of making our selection and moving forward with a job description, a job selection rubric of how the CRA board would then select, um, in a very transparent process, the new CRA director.
No, it's, it's my, uh, intent, commitment, uh, that we keep the trains running. And, um, uh, we have Ms. Justice, who is the interim CRA director, uh, we have RMA, they understand, uh, that we are, uh, looking to, uh, keep, uh, progress, uh, continue making progress on the various projects. We have a number of projects that are out there and, uh, it's, we, we want to get those done. And so, um, uh, we've got tremendous institutional memory, uh, in, in the form of Ms. Justice, uh, and, 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 and with RMA and I, you know, we have the staff capabilities to continue moving, uh, forward, uh, in that direction. Any other? I'm sorry, do, do we, we interrupted your presentation. Did you have more slides?
No, my presentation was actually done, I just kind of went back to the contract services, as you all discussed, what are kind of the broad, uh, scope of the services. But the presentation was complete.
So I think the one piece of the puzzle we haven't discussed is, uh, the, and, and, Madam City Attorney, if you don't mind, talking about how we got to the point of removing the, uh, former executive director and that that was done in accordance with the terms of the existing contract. Uh, under the contract, if the city could advise RMA, uh, that they were not satisfied with, uh, that individual, and that was done. And so, we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, at least I believe, you tell me if I'm wrong, crossed the Ts and dotted Is with respect to the removal of the former executive director.
We did, as the, as the process is set up through interlocal agreement between the two agencies, which they're, uh, lawfully allowed to do.
Okay. All right. Yes.
And that's, that's really where my interests are, or the questions I had, uh, uh, began, is that, uh, I wasn't consulted, the, I don't know anybody else on the board was consulted about removing the, uh, CRA director. And so, uh, I realize that, I realize now that the city had all the power to remove the director and the CRA had given that up some time ago, uh, when they entered into the agreement with RMA, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay.
But that, that, that was not a decision made lightly. Uh, and so I had information as the mayor, uh, as to, uh, the performance of, of Mr. Ward and, uh, there, there, you know, there were, that, that wasn't a, uh, I, I wasn't shooting off, uh, at the hip when I made that decision.
I, I recognize that, Mayor. And, and, and all I was, the, the purpose of, of me wanting this workshop is that I don't think that, uh, uh, any of us had a true understanding of all of these different and various agreements and how these agreements were being, uh, administered by the city and what role we had as sitting board members with the CRA, what if any powers and authority we had to control these agreements.
No, I think this is a very timely workshop. You know, this, uh, we, we, we did the RMA contract initially back in 2013. I was on the commission and maybe Commissioner Neering, but I don't think anyone else, uh, on the dais was on the commission then. So, I think it's very timely to have this discussion and in light of the fact that we're, that I'm proposing that we amend the agreement, uh, so that you at least know, uh, from whence we've come, where we are and where we want to go and get you the information you need in order to make a, an informed decision. Commissioner Paduzi.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we still retain all of the power when it comes to CRA functions, it's just we've, we've decided as a body over time to, um, have it be administered in a, in a little different way where we have a little more hands-off as opposed to hands-on with some of these functions. And maybe we want to get back to having a little bit more hands-on. But we retain, we've always retained the power of the board. If we, if the board decides to change the current makeup and fire RMA and say, we're directly hiring and we want to have an HR department and we want to have, we probably have the authority to do it.
Yeah, you certainly have the authority. Uh, well, I don't know, because the contract is with the city. There are made contractors with the city, so, um, you, but you sitting as the board, the city commissioners of the city, uh, could do that. One, one of the reasons, and we'll get into this more, uh, maybe in another workshop where we talk about, as, as Madam President asks, for the pros and cons of making the amendment. Uh, one of the, certainly one of the pros and one of the things that went into the thinking, uh, and by the way, I, I actually voted against the outsourcing of the RMA contract, um, uh, to, to, outsourcing of the CRA to the, uh, to RMA. But, uh, over time, I've recognized that there are resources that RMA has in, in-house, uh, that they could bring to particular projects on a project-by-project basis. These are people, these are staff that we as a city slash CRA do not have to pay for on a permanent basis. So when the need for that staff ends on a particular project, then they come off of, uh, the payroll, if you will, uh, of the city. So it's good to have that deep bench, if you will, that we could draw up on from time to time, as, as diff, as the needs a different project requires. Um, and, but, uh, in my view, having an, an, an independent, independent from RMA, an executive director who's independent from RMA and a city, uh, slash CRA employee, uh, I think is good for us, and we can get into this more, because it gives us an, it avoids any appearance of mixed loyalties. Um, if the employee is an employee of RMA, uh, and the question becomes, not saying this ever happened, but in my mind, the potential for the question arises, whether decisions are being made by that executive director on behalf of his, his or her employer, RMA, or his, or the city. And so I wanted to remove that appearance. And if they are a city employee, then I know that they are acting in the best interest of the city. And so having, uh, that balance, if you will, I think is important and we can certainly have more of those conversations at, at a subsequent workshop. Okay. Commissioner Ross?
Uh, yeah, I, um, Madam Attorney, um, now, the, have we done away with the bylaws of the CRA?
You know, I, I, you mentioned the bylaws, but I can tell you, um, again, for the last fifteen years, I don't recall anyone ever referring back to the bylaws. The last time they were amended though, I'm going from memory, I believe, was 2008. But I don't recall the board ever referencing or referring to their bylaws in any, um, meeting or otherwise. But they are, they do exist.
Well, the reason I ask is because there are certain, uh, milestones that the bylaws require us as a CRA, CRA board to, uh, maintain. For instance, uh, an annual meeting where officers of the CRA are, are elected. Uh, I don't know if we're still operating that way or have we abandoned that process? And are we statutorily allowed to abandon that process?
You create your bylaws, we can certainly look at the bylaws and see if they need to be amended or not. I think that you get to as a board, because while the statute says you can create processes, it, it doesn't mandate what that process looks like. So...
Can I ask that you have a member of your staff look at our bylaws in light of the current, uh, and even the proposed, uh, structure and see if any amendments are required? If we're going through this process, whether it's amending the RMA contract, uh, hiring a new executive director, let's make sure that the bylaws are consistent with, with what we're doing.
Will do.
All right, Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, if you just indulge me with one last comment, as, um, Commissioner of District One, where the CRA highly impacts the future development of my district, um, this is something that, that District One has been looking for specifically of taking, um, a new step forward in CRA direction. And so, we're, we're hopeful in this process and I think as much as we can, also engage neighbors and engage constituents in this process, I think we are better for it to try to make sure that, this is a big step forward. Um, we're taking a big bite out of this apple and I want it to be the best bite. So, again, um, thank you to this board and, and the mayor for your leadership on moving forward.
You're welcome, I guess. You're welcome. Okay, um, so we, we have a plan of action going forward. Let's do a draft interlocal agreement. Let's schedule a workshop where we could discuss the pros and cons of, um, amending the contract to have a, an executive director as a city employee. Uh, and then if we can get a copy of the contract, uh, to, of the RMA contract to the commissioners and, uh, have a fiscal summary, if you will, of that contract that would be, uh, attached. And if you can have your team start looking at our bylaws and see if any amendments or updates are required, is there anything else that I'm missing from that action list? Yes?
If I could. Now, on the duties and responsibilities?
Yes, yes, yes.
Are you looking for the commissioners to give us input on that?
But let's see if we could come up with an initial draft of duties and responsibilities that we could circulate to the commissioners and solicit their input.
Okay.
But let's do the heavy lifting on the, on the, on the first crack at that and I'll take a look at it. All right? Okay.